I'd like to call to order the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting for August 8, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Trustee Sam Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick Di Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Adam Moszep.
Here.
Trustee Mary Petlicov.
Here.
Trustee James Thorpe.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
She is absent today.
Chair Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Before we go on, I just want to thank the college on behalf of the superintendent and the district for setting us up and letting us use the facilities here for our Board of Trustees meeting while our boardroom is being renovated. So, thank you for that, and I appreciate the work that goes into setting us up. So, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of minutes of the following Board of Trustees Meeting: Regular Board of Trustees Meeting, June 13, 2022; Board of Trustees Audit Committee Meeting, June 13, 2022; Special Board of Trustees Meeting, June 28, 2022; Closed Session, June 28, 2022. Make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
Some more support.
I have a motion by Trustee Di Ambrosio and supported by Trustee Berry. Are there any corrections? I don't see any. May I please have a roll call?
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrosio.
Yes.
Trustee Moszep, yes. Trustee Petlicov.
Yep.
Trustee Thorpe.
Yes.
Trustee Watts. Trustee McDonald.
Yes. Next item, please.
Oh, Chair McDonald, sorry. President's items.
Thank you, Trustee Moszep, and thank you, trustees. Welcome back to the college. It's good to see you all and have you all. And, Madam Chair, it is our pleasure to host you all as a school board. I think we'll probably have to host you at least a couple more times to make the debt even for the times that you have hosted us, particularly during the pandemic when your team helped us when we were all trying to figure out how to do open meetings.
It's a good partnership.
It is a great partnership, and we're honored to have you anytime. But I would say, I can't take the thanks. I can see Paul Manucci's, at least he was here, and he's hiding.
He's always hiding behind that wall.
And several folks from the college. Gary, yes, Wojo would have helped you also. Those are the folks that deserve your thanks, and I like to just say thanks to them for you. I'll be very brief today because we have a presentation today that I'm excited to hear about, and it relates to one of the two things that I have to talk to you about. But let me start with what we're having in almost two weeks, which is the State of the College Address. I'm excited to bring the State of the College back to the college in person. We invite, of course, all trustees. And Trustee Moszep, when I asked for just a minute, and I whispered in the chairwoman's ear, I asked, is it okay if I say publicly that Trustee Thorpe has agreed to make comments at the State of the College? And I didn't want to oversell your presentation, Trustee Thorpe, but you are very effective. In fact, I sometimes wonder if you're the most effective because you say a lot with the very few number of words, and you're supportive of the college. And I also know that
Now, he's limiting you. He's tuning it up.
Sometimes speaking is one where you all have to draw straws. And I know everyone wants to speak at the State of the College, but you're the one that will be doing it, so I appreciate that. And, of course, any other trustee who would like to come and make comments would be welcome. At the State of the College, we will do many of the things we have historically done, which is talk about the state of the college in its broad spectrum. But what the majority of the State of the College Address will be focused on is the work that you all have focused us on, which is student success. And we'll be outlining several things that the college is getting ready to launch for this fall semester. As you might remember, we're already six months into our two-month window to make real progress on this strategic plan that is directly related to student success and holds a mirror up to ourselves with metrics that we've shown, that we say need to be addressed. So, I hope to see you all at the State of the College. I know a lot of my colleagues will be there. We'll also be live streaming it, but we are hoping to encourage attendance because we always offer an opportunity for questions of me and anyone else. And this will be the first time in a couple of years where you'll have to be there in person if you do want to ask questions. There won't be any shortage of opportunity to talk with me or any of the leaders of the college, as is always the case. You can always reach out to me directly. I will respond to you. But you'll also know, trustees, that we built a process to try to bring back the sense of community during the pandemic that we called First Fridays, where we met virtually and enjoyed a no-agenda town hall with the entire college and whoever wanted to join. And we'll be starting those up again in September. So, for those in our community that really do feel that the only way they can get a community feeling now is virtually and a two-way communication through virtual means, the next opportunity for that will be the September First Fridays. And, of course, Madam Chair, I'd always welcome trustees to make opening comments at those. And, in fact, if I get tough questions there, I wouldn't mind even just handing the baton over to trustees on occasion. But those are two things that I'm excited about because they do give us an opportunity to be what we are, which is a community of a team that's working towards now a really exciting strategic plan, which is the second item in the last item I'll give you for an update today. And that is what we've done so far with the strategic plan. Over the last several weeks and almost into two or three months, we've taken what we have in the strategic plan, and you recall there are four priorities. Each priority has two goals, and I have brought four vice presidents and the faculty senate chair together to start building teams for each priority. Again, there's two goals in each priority, and we've taken those teams and started to look at what would be quick and very effective ways to start moving the needle on those two goals. And those vice presidents built teams for each priority, and those teams went out throughout the college and asked for feedback and really said clearly, if you have any idea how to change our trajectory on enrollment with minority students, if you have any ideas of how to increase our graduation rates, if you have any ideas how to, all the goals that we have in our strategic plan. And then we sent out a survey across the entire college, brought all that information from the teams in the broad survey, and started working on narrowing the list. And over the last, really, three weeks through the work of, I don't see Dr. Perry here, but Dr. Perry joined the four vice presidents that you know, Dr. Gonco and Dr. Nealon, who really were the most involved in the writing of the plan and frankly, the working through the feedback that we received and the pillars. And then Vice President DeLonge and Vice President Diamond have been instrumental in that also. We developed a shorter list of initiatives that we believe will be, as Dr. Nealon says, which levers can we pull that are the easiest to pull with the quickest return on that time to pull the lever in those goals we're trying to move the metrics on. And then, once we got that list down to something in the order of 10 to 15 things we could do, we brought the strategic planning team back together in this room less than two weeks ago and reviewed that list and refined it further. And at the State of the College, we'll be outlining the initiatives, the tactics that we plan to deploy to move the needle on these eight goals in each of the four priorities. So, I'm trying to be a little bit of a promoter here. Come to the State of the College and see the initiatives that we plan to outline and headline at the State of the College. And we are, I have to tell you, trustees, I'm very excited about this work. I really do believe that the college is behind it. They see that you are behind us in it. They see the necessity that we have to make progress on these things for our students. And the last thing I'll say is, I'm so excited about this plan, Vice President Best and I have gone to the Detroit Regional Chamber and said, we want your help and investment in this. And we're actually making a lot of great progress in asking them for funds to support some of these initiatives. And my hope and expectation is that the two major funders of this program, which are the Ballmer Group and the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation, have helped us refine these initiatives for what they believe will help us reach student success excellence. And they wouldn't be doing that unless they said we had a chance for funding, which is another exciting thing that the college is working on. But what you should see is that we are now marshaling nearly every available resource towards these priorities. These are the laser focus of the college. It's exciting because we've built a team that understands these priorities and goals, believes in them, and they have the respect and trust of the various constituencies of the college because they worked with them in building that. One of those things is helping students in the process of acclimating to college, especially when they are first-generation students in college. And I will set that up as just a little bit of a segue to your next presentation. But before I invite you to move to your next item on the agenda, I'll invite any questions, Madam Chair.
Any questions, anyone? No questions?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Trustee Moszep.
That's regarding, obviously, the topic of enrollment. I know we received a report that enrollment was down, and I wanted to get a feeling from the president and how he thinks we can move the needle in the next few weeks as the starter classes for the fall are starting soon.
Yes. The report that I shared with the board is a report that routinely goes out and will go out to the entire college in the next two days, possibly tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow. And that report shows us, there are many metrics, but the one I focus on the most is credit hours. And credit hours are down 4.19% from where they were last year. And some context on that, in looking at the other colleges that are similarly sized and in our region and also in the mid-Michigan region and southwest Michigan, which are the comparables that have value, we are doing pretty well. Most of the colleges are down more than us. There is one college that is showing an increase in enrollment that is close to us, our geography, which, I don't know this, but I wonder if they have not done one of the processes to take students who are registered in classes and take them out because they haven't paid for the class yet. We call that deregister. Colleges have different names for that. I don't know that college's process, so because their enrollment is showing a growth by, I think, almost 8%, and the rest of the similarly situated colleges are all not only underwater, but way more than our 4% in some instances, it makes me wonder if that anomaly is as a result of they haven't culled the course yet. But I will say this. Enrollment going down is never a good thing for the college. That was our goal before the pandemic, and this is a serious problem for the college because our college has over 50% of its revenue devoted to tuition, which is related to enrollment. Other community colleges are not so reliant on enrollment vis-à-vis tuition because they have a higher income from property taxes. So, we have to watch this, and that's the reason why the board gets updates as often and as precisely as our updates are. But I will tell you that there is something going on in the ecosystem of students who attend community colleges because we've, no one really understood what would happen as the result of the pandemic, and we all kind of watched that and tried to understand it. But I do fear that what we're seeing now is kind of a normalizing of what we historically have found, which is when jobs are very easy to access, particularly well-paying jobs, there is a segment of our population that would otherwise go to community college as a way to get those good jobs. And they're not a majority of the students, but they may make up the 4% to 7% to 12% that you might see. I can't tell you, Trustee Moszep, if that's what's happening here, but I will tell you that the job economy in southeast Michigan and in the country now that we've seen from the Department of Labor just this week is, it's pre-pandemic levels and growing. So, those students who see community colleges as a way to get access to a meaningful job, less of them need community colleges for that access. But that doesn't change the reality, that we have to set up a cost structure that asks you all to evaluate what our revenue is versus our expenses. And the two things that we have most control over are enrollment and the amount we charge students. So, as we track the fall enrollment, you'll see its impact on the budget. I'll keep you apprised of that. And the last thing I'll say, because I am an optimist, is we just did our deregistration less than a week ago, which is when you will see an immediate decline because there are some students who either weren't serious enough to pay or need a little bit of help. And then that deregistration dip will come back with a growth. And in the history of this college, and Mr. Sackowski and I have looked at this, you will see we do anywhere from two to three deregistrations, and you'll see a dip, and then a growth, and then another dip, and another growth, and another dip, and they get smaller. Those little hiccups get smaller. So, but historically, this first big dip gets you to the kind of lowest of the low point, and you get a little closer and a little closer to where you were last year. I can't promise you what happened because I have to say, every week, we're still seeing national writers on community colleges saying, we really don't know what's happening with enrollment, higher education writ large, but certainly with community colleges. And it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of a roller coaster right now. So, I would say 4.19% is not where we want to be. It's not as bad as some are, but it does give our team something to see as an urgent need.
Trustee Petlicov.
Just to kind of piggyback on the concerns of enrollment, it's what I've said in the past, that I would like to see us have some niche classes, courses, for those students who could not acquire those skill sets at another local area community college and would find value coming back here and investing in that, rather than just taking a $15-an-hour job because it's available at the local Kroger's or something, because that wouldn't satisfy them for their future career choice. And my hope is, is that we can continue to grow those kinds of programs here that have a great attraction, that are not necessarily being offered at every other community college in the surrounding area, that would be appealing to draw students back here. We've heard from several of the students who are making career shifts and have come back to restart their education because they weren't satisfied where they were, even though they were making a living wage kind of thing. And I'm hoping that we can continue to find those pathways that will make us unique and appealing to a variety of students to want to invest, even if there is that choice of just going out and getting a decent-paying job, but it's not necessarily something that they really want to do.
I agree with what you're saying, Trustee Petlicov. And I, what I would describe your suggesting the strategy should be is investing in the strengths that Henry Ford College can produce, such that students will come here because they can do better than the $15-an-hour job you just described. And I'll give you two examples of how we're trying to position the college to take advantage of those types of strengths. One is the Ford Asset Program. It clearly drives enrollment because students do exactly what you just said. They see it as a viable path to a meaningful career that Henry Ford College provides a unique avenue to. The problem with that program is it's space limited, which, if you drive to the northwest corner of our campus right now, you'll see we're in the active process of changing. We're literally, you can see blocks of concrete that have been removed because we're growing the scope of that program so that we can do what you're suggesting, because I agree with you. Growing our strengths is where I think we can reduce the problem of enrollment constraints. Another program that is the exact same type of program that students want access to and line up, really do line up to get into, is the nursing program. We have about 160 to 180 students a year that want to get into, and there's a list, list of people who wanted to get in but didn't get in because of the thing you just described. They see that as a better access than the $15-an-hour job that is plentiful. Problem with that program is we're limited by the human capital necessary to train those people. And Dr. Nealon has come up with a pretty innovative way to solve that, which is to partner with employers. And I think we're making progress. We've had now meetings with one major employer with nurses, and we're lining up two more where we're going to say to them, you clearly need more nurses. We have the largest two-year nursing course in the state. What would you like? Nothing more than to have access, exclusive access to the nursing students at Henry Ford College. You're happy with the output we make. You wish we'd make more, but we don't have enough instructors to do this. How about your instructors come and help us increase the scope and throughput of the students that we can put through, reduce our waitlist for this course, and in exchange, you can have access to these students and help your constraints, which we're all reading about in the newspapers about a shortage of nursing. And, you know, Dr. Nealon and I have been singing that tune for longer, and he's a musicologist with a PhD, so he sounds better, but we've both been singing that song, and no one was listening. And just in the last six months now, we've had one meeting where the chief operating officer of the third-largest nonprofit hospital system in the country has said, not only will we partner with you, we will stop requiring our nurses to have a bachelor's of nursing. We will hire them with the associate's degree of nursing. And I said, well, are you sure? Because we keep hearing that you won't. And he said, we're going to get this done. So, this is another example of saying, we should invest in those areas where students will see a unique opportunity as regards other community colleges. Because I will tell you, I, well, the numbers don't lie. There's no Ford Asset Program in the state, much less the region, so there's no competition there, and people want that access. And there's no nursing program that puts through as many students as we do. So, you're going to see us continue to try to put our resources behind those programs where they are our strength. And by the way, they are going to be strategies that support the eight goals in the strategic plan because they identify putting people, particularly underrepresented minorities, into those courses and into those careers.
Trustee Thorpe.
President Cavalluna, you mentioned where we're at right now compared to the credit hours. Can you remind us from a budget standpoint, what did we budget for, for the fall semester?
We usually budget in the realm of 100,000 to 110,000 credit hours. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, like, was this one of the years that we thought we might have a contraction on number of hours or just a small increase from what we had done last year?
We budgeted to be flat from last year.
I was going to say, wasn't it zero?
Yeah, yeah. And, but, this college does something that is unique to all the other colleges that I've seen and that Vice President Sackowski seen. This college consistently enrolls more in the winter than in the fall. And we all see that universities and colleges do the reverse. We're not really sure why that is, but we have many years had an underperforming fall that has been ameliorated or completely washed out and turned to a positive because of a rally in the winter. And for your ballpark figure, we think of ourselves as enrolling 230,000 credit hours to 260,000 credit hours per year. And you can take about 20,000 to 40,000 of those for the summer, and then you're left with about 200,000 to 220,000 for the fall and winter. And right now, we're at over 80,000 for the fall. So, if I were on this board, I would say, well, that's a lot of numbers, Russ. Tell me really what that means. We're in the first quarter of a four-quarter game. We're not really sure what the end of the first quarter's score will be, but we are nowhere even close to getting blown out. We're competing pretty effectively, but we may, we may have some ground to make up in the second half.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I just want to add a little food for thought, something I heard on the radio on the way here. They were talking about the enormous unexpected job growth rate of last week, and they said, and this was interesting, I hadn't thought of it, one caveat to that is, at this point right now, there are more people that are holding two full-time jobs currently than ever in the history of the record-keeping. So, that could have some influence on enrollment with people wanting to, because of inflationary costs, they do see the purpose or the need right now to have two full-time jobs. So, that may have some bearing on where we're sitting right now. So, anyone else? Next item, please.
Next item is special reports, Michigan College Access Networks, MCAN, College Completion Corpse, Vice President Diamond.
Thank you. Trustee Moszep, if I may, Madam Chair. Go ahead, Vice President Diamond. I'll just take the liberty of introducing you. This is one of what I hope you're starting, you'll begin starting seeing from this administration is short, and I do mean short, presentations on what we're doing as a college on these strategic plan initiatives. And the vast majority of these are going to be focused on getting to students and helping them with what they need to stay enrolled and be successful. Trustee Moszep, I'll tell you, the most successful enrollment processes and initiatives are going to be keeping the students we enroll here. For the populations we serve, that is the most bang for the buck. And that's why I'm excited to have newly-minted Vice President Diamond talk to a bit about one of the things that she and her team have brought to the college with new resources on that front. So, Vice President Diamond, I appreciate you taking the time, and I think you're going to introduce one of your colleagues.
I am. Good evening, President Cavalluna, Chair McDonald, and trustees. I am very excited to be here tonight to talk with you about the importance of collaboration and partnership as we work towards student success. We know this is the basis, the heart and soul of our strategic plan, and it's something which we are diving into deeply right now. I'm going to just take a really quick moment to breeze through these first couple slides just to give you a refresher. We want to talk about student success. There's a lot of questions about student success. What is it? Why is it important? Who's responsible? And how do we measure it? You see some of the answers to some of those questions up there, and I would say it's all of these things. It takes a number of people. It takes within the college, outside of the college. It takes retention. It takes graduation. It takes completion. And just as a quick reminder what the retention rate is, and this is something that is twofold for me. One, we have a retention rate, which looks at the number of our new first-year students that enroll at the same institution for the following year. But looking at the retention rate is not all that we need to do. We have to dig deeper. We have to define that. We have to look at special populations of students because there are focus groups of students that may have a lower retention rate that contribute to that other retention rate. So, you'll hear as I continue this evening why I feel that defined group of students is important. Graduation rate, completion rate, real quickly. Graduation rate, this is an IPED's definition, something which we don't always have control over, but it's the number of students who complete their program within a specified period of time, typically 150%. Completion rate is the number of students that start at our school and finish their degree or their certificate. So, that's our completion rate. Now, talking about how do we accomplish student success, some of the things that we're doing right now, and you've heard the president speak about, we are implementing initiatives and tactics for our strategic plan. We are engaging the entire HFC community. We're working with four-year partners, and we're engaging our community partners. And part of student success is, as I mentioned earlier, everybody. And so, you see a variety of internal offices here, and you might not think all of these areas have something to do with student success, but they do. Human resources brings the faculty, brings the staff that help our students. I'd like to highlight here that I have community partners indicated, and this is something that I'm going to talk about tonight, how partnerships and collaboration help our student success. So, partnerships are important, and one of our primary and focused groups that we are working with is called the Michigan College Access Network, sometimes referred to as MCAN. And a few things about MCAN is that they were founded in 2010. At their very core, they believe college changes everything. is that they were founded in 2010. At their very core, they believe college changes everything. They work towards Michigan residents earning a certificate or a degree. They also serve a very important function, equity. They promote equity. And what this does is it makes sure every student population, specifically looking at low-income students, first-generation students, and students of color, making sure that they have an opportunity to pursue a college education. Within MCAN, there is a program that they call the College Completion Corps. And within the College Completion Corps, they place AmeriCorps members within community colleges across Michigan. If you're not familiar with AmeriCorps, I know some people are, some people are not. It is a service, it's a service organization. It's a network of local, state, national programs that connects intensive service to meet community needs, such as education, in which we, of course, are a higher education institution, so this is where our interest is. So within this College Completion Corps, there are college completion coaches. The coaches serve cohorts of students from anywhere from 100 to 150 students. That's the size of small groups. And they focus on those three groups that I talked about earlier, the low-income students, first-generation students, and students of color. The role of a college completion coach, I want to just talk a little bit about what that involves, and its intentional intrusive approach to student outreach. The work that they do includes being an advocate for students and connecting them to the college system, helping them navigate the waters. They also will do things like develop a plan for students to complete their FAFSA and connect them to the appropriate individuals at the college, their support team. And on average, they engage with a student for 16 hours over an This is an amazing program. It really is. And when we learned about it, we were really interested. We decided to do some research, and what we decided to do was submit an application. And in addition to those three categories I talked about earlier, I asked for another coach for a fourth population, and that's the Michigan Reconnect Futures for Frontliners students. There was a competitive application process. MCAN went through, and they identified colleges, community colleges, where these coaches would be placed. And I'm excited to tell you, HFC was the only institution to receive four coaches. So we're really proud of that. And going to talk to you a little bit about now what our commitment is to this program. You're thinking, this is a good program, but, you know, what do we do for it? You know, somebody else is providing some coaches to us. What do we do? We assign a site supervisor for the completion coaches, information sharing with the completion coaches, a tracking system, if you will. We need to know if what we're doing with the students is working. So it's important to track them, watch their retention, see what's going on, see whether there might be stumbling blocks or barriers. We also provide use to the HFC systems that the coaches would need to engage with the students. So things like email, the student system, phone, website, internet, things like that. The cost of the program, I know you're probably wondering, you know, again, what do we contribute? What do we do? This is a cost-share program, and we share the cost with MCAN. And so the costs are, as you can see on the screen, very, very economical, and also something that we can afford. And I'm going to tell you why we can do that. We know money does not grow on trees. Enrollment is down. We needed to fund our program. So we applied for a grant with the State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, LEO, as you might know it. We were awarded $150,000 with an institutional match of $150,000. And this money will be used to fund the coaches, but also importantly, the wraparound services these students need. There might be things like books, transportation, food. There are things that these students need, maybe a laptop. So this money can help promote that with the students. The status of this program. MCAN is continuing to promote these applications and interview qualified applicants. If you know of anybody who's interested, please let us know. We will connect you with the right people. We currently have our very first college completion coach on our campus now, and she's here tonight and will be joining me shortly up here. We hope to have three remaining college completion coaches filled soon. So again, I have information. I have my cards with me if you'd like, if you know of anybody you think might be a good fit. And our first college completion coach, her name is Jennifer Tomina, and she's going to come up here and share with you her experiences, a life, a day in the life of a college completion coach, and what her experiences have been.
Hello, Board and everybody attending. My name is Jennifer Tomina, and I'm a college commission coach here, as Holly stated. My experience is, my experience in general is that I am a first-generation college student. I'm a product of the community college. I went to OCC in Irwin, such as liberal arts. I also have a Bachelor of Social Work from Wayne State and a Master of Education in Student Affairs from Regent University. I have also been a non-traditional student and an adult learner. My mission right now is building my cohort of first-generation low-income and/or students of color. Right now, my cohort is being built of at least three different avenues. There's students from Lincoln Park area, I believe Lincoln Park High School, students who are possibly dealing with academic dismissal. I'll be able to assist with them. And then tomorrow, there's an event called STEM Welcome Day, where new science and engineering students come to campus to meet with new faculty and staff, and I have an application for these students. So I also have a copy of a success plan and notes that I've been able to find on the MCAN Resource Hub. So right now, without a cohort right now, it's just planning for the cohort, pretty much, but I'll have them soon enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I have listed for you contact information. I can make this presentation available to you.
Don't let her go away. Don't let her go away.
Jennifer, oh, come on. Just two notes is, I mentioned in the presentation, there's a site supervisor, and the site supervisor is Nicole Ford-Kontrajek, who's here this evening. We also have an oversight supervisor, who is Kelly Baritono, who is also here this evening. So we brought our enrollment services team in force just for you. And we're excited to be here again and happy to entertain any questions.
Trustee Petlicov?
I knew I was going to have some questions. All right. I've got several, but I'll try to make them brief.
Sure.
Since we're just getting introduced to this. One, when you did the intro of what the coaches were going to be, you included the word intrusive.
Yes.
And I understand that a lot of students may welcome an approach that is very hand-holding in guiding them, especially for first-time students or students who are struggling to understand the variety of services that could be there to support them. But is this a voluntary process for these students, or how are we selecting them? And are we giving them an opt-out if they get into it and say, this is just, you're too much involved in what I'm doing? And do we have a process where they can give us feedback, so we know how they're interacting and how they feel this approach is working for them?
Sure. It is not mandatory. If a student were to say to us, I don't want to be part of this, then we would not continue to contact them. We don't want to be that intrusive.
Right.
They will be, they will continue, I don't know if you can hear me without this. They will continue to receive general information, the nudges to enroll, the nudges to fill out their FAFSA.
Which we do for every student.
Which we do for every student, but we would not continue to focus on them if they chose not to. How they're being selected is random. That's the only way to do it. We cannot sit and pick, select students. So it would be random selection for all of those cohorts that I talked about, the low-income, students of color, Michigan Reconnect, and the first-generation students. I think the other question you had was...
Is, do they have an opportunity to provide feedback as to how they felt that this was working for them, so that we get some kind of assessment?
There will definitely be surveys and methods of evaluation.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Trustee Mosz?
Yeah, in the same terms that Trustee Petlicov asked. So, coaches like Jennifer and those who are going to be hired, they're going to see some things in the system where things could be fixed for everybody else. So I assume those cohort students are more of a sample of our students who are enrolling. And how would that feedback be transported back to say, okay, well, we have a problem in this department, or students are having a hard time enrolling, or filling out their FAFSA? So what can, how instant that feedback is being transported between the coaches and the office, and the office that it, not an issue, but probably a process improvement would need to be helped?
Sure. Great question. And it would be instant. You know, Jennifer's working with Kelly very closely. That information would go to Nicole or to me, I mean, instantly.
Okay.
We want to know about those. We want the opportunity to improve. So we're looking for that feedback on a continuous basis. And then, you know, we would work with the designated departments, if it's Financial A, Student Accounting, and then work with them for the process improvement.
Yeah, I think this is great. I remember being a freshman at U of M Dearborn next door, and somebody who barely got accepted because of the ACT score. I was assigned to be to, they call it Academic Success Center. And there was a tutor and a coach, and kind of held, handheld me throughout the first few semesters. And students who are in need, who are definitely struggling, will need that help. And even students who are not struggling, probably who don't know the process very well, will need help and will appreciate the help with people like Jennifer. So, thank you.
Sure. Trustee Barry.
So my friend gets randomly picked to be part of this.
I'm sorry?
So one of my friends gets randomly picked to be part of this program, right? Sounds very, very successful. If I reach out, want to be, take advantage of the services, is there a possibility there?
Sure. Yes. If a student were to say, you know, I want part of this.
Yeah. We don't turn anybody away.
No, we would welcome them. And the other component of this is that, as part of the strategic plan, I am working on the implementation of something called Student Success Teams. And so either they would be through a coach, or they're going to be part of this. Every student will end up being part of a student success team. We're going to start again small with pilots like the coaches, and then we'll be able to welcome all of the students into a success team comprised of five people within the college that can get at all of these, the hand-holding, the helping them navigate the system, pay their bill, buy tutoring. And so they would be welcomed, absolutely.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I might, Jennifer, the reason I asked Vice President Diamond to introduce you today was because I wanted you to get a sense about how supportive this entire college is of what you're trying to do. You were brought to the college, and we hope we can attract three more of your colleagues, to do something that this college may not have ever done before, which is to make everything, everything about this college centered on what your work is going to be, which is to help us change the way we treat students and interact with students to help them be more successful, like what Trustee Mosz just mentioned. All the studies, trustees, all the science says that one of the biggest problems of student success is the institution setting up systems that inhibit the student. And we are going to, Jennifer, empower you to help us find those things. So I'm excited to have you on the team. I hope you feel that you're welcome and that you're part of the team, and this is a new thing, where a state agency uses a nonprofit, that the state agency is LEO and the nonprofit is MCAN, to partner with a college, share the expense to employ you, all for the idea that we want you to grab your cohort of students, make them what I can hear you say they are. It's your mission to help them be successful. And so I hope, and part of the culture here is to identify how we're doing. So here's your first chance. How's it going? I mean, is it, are you being treated well? Do you feel supported? If not, can we do things to help you? Because your success is going to be our student's success.
I just feel extremely supported, supported ever since like my first weekend I've been here, week six, week six, starting week seven. Nothing is looked at the board now. I mean, I know with the first coach, it's like, you're a pioneer.
You're being thrown at it.
You're painting the picture now.
Right. So I hope to be a good example for any coaches coming after me, too.
Absolutely. Well, let me tell you this. Reach out to me, or Ms. Diamond, or any of these trustees, if you think that this college can improve, and it's not. Our culture is where you see a problem, identify it, and we're going to work on it together. So I want you to know, it's rare that I ask employees of the college to come. And I want you to know how important your work is, because you have the chance to help us become an excellent college.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. I was just given a little statistic that I thought was interesting. Brandy Johnson, who is now the president of MCCA, was a founder of MCAN. And President Cavallona just shared that with me. I thought it was interesting.
If I might, before we go to the next item, Madam Chair, I'll just say, this is another instance where that strategic plan that you all authorized is putting this college in a position to be the leader on what is the most important thing to the, should be every college. It clearly is for this college. But external entities now are looking at community colleges and universities and saying, this is the most important thing. What are you doing about it? And this competitive funding opportunity was one where the state of Michigan was going to let out hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we competed for $150,000 of that successfully, more successfully than any other college in the state of Michigan. And it was because we could hold up the strategic plan and say, we believe it is important for student success, not just generally, but for these students, these first-generation students, these students that have historically not had access to or success at colleges. So I want to applaud you and my team who built that strategic plan, because it is, it is the game plan for which we will continue to be able to have victories like this one. So thank you for letting us and unanimously supporting that strategic plan.
And I think we should applaud whoever wrote the application for getting us four coaches. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Just among the many things that are happening right now on campus that are exciting, and I really see us going in the direction of student success is where we need to be. And I see us as making tremendous headway in that direction. Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action and have submitted their blue card by 7:10 p.m. to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. I do not have any citizen participation cards.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item, special consideration to action items. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude them from the action below.
I see none.
Move to approve action items one through five as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support. Okay, I have moved by Trustee Thorpe, supported by Trustee Petlicov. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosz? Yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Chair McDonald? Yes.
Next item, please.
All right. So next item is acknowledgement of correspondence.
Nope. Next item.
Board Committee... Board committee reports. We did have some committees, right?
Did we? We had a bunch last time.
Alls we had was an audit discussion.
Yeah, that was reported, yeah, yeah.
A request for information and...
Hold on just one moment. Trustee Barry?
We have, just shared with Kathy, August 16th, 11:30 a.m., it's a Tuesday, the committee for the president evaluation tool that's scheduled, and I'll report to you how that goes.
Okay, August 16th, what was the?
11:30 a.m.
11:30, okay. Thank you, Trustee Barry.
Sure.
Continue, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
I see none.
Board member commentary?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank Local 71 for the contract that they just, we just voted on, and they ratified. We appreciate the hard work they do and their efforts to be on top of their positions here at the college as well.
Agreed. Trustee Thorp?
Two things. Before we meet again as a board here, new school year will start, so good luck to everyone in the upcoming school year. And the other one, might actually slip back to request for info. President Cavallone, when are the roads gonna be done out front? Because will the students even know how to get onto the campus?
Be careful what you wish for, is the...
I want it fixed, that's what I want. Fix the road, something like that.
You know, it's, this is very rare that this happens, where a trustee asks me a question, and just that day, I was doing the work of the question. And I wish, you know, it was like some conspiracy where you told me you were gonna ask this, but you didn't. I called the county today, and there was a very brand-new member of my cabinet, a new vice president, who asked that very same question, so great minds. And I promised her that I would ask the county, and I'm, I have a voicemail, I haven't checked from the county. So I'm on it. I am really excited they're doing it. I'm a little bit worried about the pace. And so I actually told the county, should I tell the students, hey, this is how you handle the construction? Because we're gonna have an onslaught of students in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
So, and by the way, that was your new vice president of student affairs, who also saw it as a concern. So I'll report to you what I hear.
What we can hope for is U of M Dearborn, which is also going to be impacted by this, maybe has more, louder voice that they can add to that.
Well, it's funny, it, oh, it was probably seven, was it seven months ago when you told me to look at the potholes? Seven months ago, I called the chancellor, because then interim Vice President Diamond and Vice President Satkowski was mad because I was damaging his vehicles, making him come to work. I called Chancellor Gross, and I said, do you think if we wrote a letter together? Which we did. And that afternoon, they were doing asphalt, pothole fills. So yes, yes, Chancellor Gross's voice is much stronger than mine.
On a positive note, some a lot of improvements last couple weeks, I can tell you that. A lot of good changes, so we're almost there.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe one more notice in order with a reminder of when classes will begin, from the two of you.
Yes, yes, classes will begin the days after the state of the college. The state of the college is August 23rd. And we'll be welcoming back faculty that day and students the days after. And I do have a commentary if all the trustees are done.
It looks like, go ahead, President Cavallone.
Dr. Nealon, are any of your teammates here who are new teammates?
I know that the recently approved Dean of Health and Human Services had to run and take care of her mom. So I did say that, you know, mom does come for us. So she's just left, and I am not sure that any of our separate full-time faculty that are on this morning have accepted me, or if anyone has. Eric, do you see her?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nealon. I will tell you, trustees, I'm excited to welcome my new, well, my continuing teammate, Dr. Cindy Scheuer, is the dean of the School of Health and Human Services. I will be putting out a public statement very soon, welcoming her into that new role after a competitive search, and I would be extolling her virtues here. I did see her here, and I just talked too long, apparently. But I will send her your regards. And then I wanted to say thank you, as did Trustee Petlicov, to Local 71 and its negotiations with the college. I thought that was a fruitful and effective negotiation. And I do see at least two, and I may see, I'm not gonna call it everyone, but I do see two Local 71 members, Fred Steiner and Ruben Brookley, who are there, who are stalwart leaders at the college, and Nicole Ford-Kandresjak. So thank you all for your service to the college. I wanna compliment John Satkowski for helping lead that negotiation team, but the real workhorses of that negotiation are assistant directors at the Human Resource Department. And because they're such unheralded stars, I'm gonna embarrass them and make them stand up. Mark Tate, just stand up. You came in there during a pandemic, so I want them to be able to see your face. You know, Mark's a great teammate here. He was a, he served our country in submarines, and he's a lawyer, so I tend to like him even more, which is rare.
You identify with him.
And then next to him is Assistant Director Lynn Borzan, who you know, go ahead and stand up. You haven't been with us for, what, another 30 years, maybe? What is, what is the tally now?
Didn't you see that in the contract?
Starting at 37 years.
37 years, strong. Both of them have been, both of them have been great, great leaders in the HR department, which also plays a major role in contract negotiations. And I appreciate both of them. And if their colleague, Dr. Gonko, were not on a family excursion, she would be here singing their praises also. So thank you all for what, what is a continuing process of contract negotiations with the five collective bargaining units at this college are done in respectful, professional ways, even when they are difficult. And I appreciate the board being a good partner to those collective bargaining units with today's ratification of the Local 71 contract. And that's all my comments.
Anyone else?
Next item?
Next item.
Future meeting dates, Monday, August 22nd, 2022, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, September 12th. Pete, we also have that committee meeting on the 16th for the president evaluation on August 16th.
August 16th, 11:30 a.m.
11:30 a.m. Monday, September 12th, 2022, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, September 19th, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, September 19th, 2022, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenoff Boardroom.
And we are adjourned.